Yes.
Okay, welcome to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Virtual Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trimble, Acting Director of Planning and the planners assigned to tonight's petition. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petitions at an executive meeting in January. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners in their Executive Meeting Agenda Packet. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. Then, the petitioner will present the request. They will be allotted 15 minutes. Then, persons in favor, in opposition, or with concern will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Please note, you may only speak one time. To indicate you wish to speak, click the raise hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After the meeting concludes, a poll will appear, allowing you to indicate whether you are in favor, in opposition, or with concern. This is not a vote, and it's not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear tonight's first petition, which is PC 31-21, St. Louis County Planning Commission.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Debbie Solberg. I'm a planner with the Department of Planning. My address is 41 South Central, St. Louis, Missouri, 63105. PC 3121, St. Louis County Planning Commission, is a proposal to amend, next slide, Mel, Chapter 1003 of the St. Louis County Zoning Ordinance with respect to electric vehicle charging. Next slide. Ordinance 28-256, which was recently adopted by the St. Louis County Council, requires electric vehicle charging stations and vehicle charging station-ready parking spaces in all parking lots. Next. As the number of electric vehicles on the road increases, the demand for electric vehicle charging stations increases as well. While electric vehicles still make up a small proportion of the vehicles sold in the United States, the number is growing. It's estimated that by 2025, electric vehicle sales will be 10% of the passenger vehicle sales worldwide. Over the first half of 2021, sales of plug-in vehicles more than doubled over the previous year, 2020. That far outpaced the 29% rise in total vehicle sales during the same period. The federal infrastructure bill recently signed into law provides for $7.5 billion to build a nationwide network of plug-in vehicle chargers. Next. The zoning ordinance permits electric charging stations in parking lots. A site plan is required for those electric vehicle charging stations. The charging stations are generally identified by a pole, poster pole, with an apparatus to take a credit card for payment. They also may have small signage identifying it as an electric vehicle charging station. In 2017, the zoning ordinance was amended to allow small signs on electric vehicle charging stations. The signage was limited to one square foot in area, and the overall height of the vehicle charging station sign is limited to six feet in height or less. These charging stations with logos and signs were only proposed at that time in commercially-zoned parcels. The recent changes to the vehicle charging code will require electrical vehicle charging stations in all parking lots, including churches and schools in their parking lots. The reason that this is being required is because while most people, people who live in a single-family home probably have a place they can plug their vehicle in at night, if you are traveling, you may need to charge, and sometimes you may need to charge during the day. I have some pictures that I found that are examples of vehicle charging stations. Some of them are in New York, and the next slide. Some of these are, you know, this is like a row of vehicle charging stations, and they, you know, they exist in other countries, in other countries as well. The particular ordinance that the county has recently adopted require this, and established this electric vehicle charging code, requires 10% of parking spaces to be equipped with the equipment wired for vehicle, electric vehicle stations, and designed as electric vehicle-ready spaces that could be converted to electric vehicle supply equipment spaces as needed. 2% of the parking spaces shall be electric vehicle supply equipment spaces with a charging station. This will apply to new parking areas of 10 parking spaces or more. It also applies to construction or renovations to an existing structure consisting of 50% or more of the structure, and alterations to the building's parking lot involving addition or reduction of parking spaces. It also applies to parking lot reconstruction and overlay projects and changes in occupancy classifications. So, this is fairly wide-reaching. The purpose of this public hearing tonight is to take comments on if there's any, you know, the department has certain ideas about what needs to be modified in the zoning ordinance, but if anyone has comments on this electric vehicle charging code requirements and how it relates to the zoning ordinance, that would be, it would be appropriate at this time. Does any, do any of the Commissioners have any questions for me?
Yes, yeah, Debbie. How is this, is the plan going to be working with parking garages, long-term parking like at the airport, in the parking garages and surface parking?
Well, it clearly applies to surface parking. Unfortunately, most of the parking garages around the airport are in municipalities, and this electric vehicle charging code is effective only in the unincorporated section of St. Louis County, Missouri. I'm not sure how the County Council envisioned this working in parking garages. I would assume that they would have fallen under the same kind of requirements that a parking lot would, that if they, if there were modifications or renovations to that parking garage, they would have to meet these requirements. If there were renovations or reconstruction to the buildings that these parking garages provide parking for, that they would have to meet the requirements.
So, for example, a new apartment project with an attached or surrounded parking garage, they're going to have to, if that's Indiana Incorporated, St. Louis County, they're going to be required to have these spots?
Right, right. I think that, you know, and I think that a lot of new construction, I know new, some of the new multiple-family developments that I'm familiar with have provided electric vehicle charging stations in their parking lots. I think that the people who make decisions on these, on new buildings, understand that this is something they're going to have to provide for either their customers or their employees or their residents in the future.
Debbie, any other Commissioners?
Yeah, Debbie, this is Bill. Hey. Who pays for these?
Well, this is, this is a, right now, like I said, there's some money in the federal infrastructure bill to pay for it. I believe that Ameren has a pot of money, and they currently are subsidizing half of the cost of electric vehicle charging stations up to a certain amount of, you know, they have, they have a maximum amount of money that they've allocated for that. So, but basically, it is, it's a cost of doing business, you know? If you, if you expect the public to use your, you know, to come to your parking lot, for whatever reason, you need to provide these. Now, like I said, most of these are for, or pay, you know, so the electricity is, you charge for the electricity. So, it's not like you're, you know, but yes, there is a cost to the electrical wiring system and the facility and the plug-in station itself.
And so, that, the money that St. Louis County is getting would be available for that, I guess, huh?
Well, if the county is get, you know, if the county wants to allocate some of their infrastructure money for this, but there is money in the infrastructure bill for vehicle charging stations, or a national network of vehicle charging stations.
I would say.
The county hasn't done that yet? Allocated the money for it?
No, the county is not, as my understanding is, county has not allocated any of their infrastructure bill money yet.
Okay, because that's, that will be probably, general public would probably want to know that, one of their first questions about it, you know, if there's funds available, one, would it be allocated? Okay. So, there's no answer to that right now?
No, no, the Planning Department does not have any answer right now. We could see if there's, if there's any movement, I mean, any inclination to do that. My guess is a lot of the infrastructure money is already, you know, for roads and things like that, but.
Yeah, if you remember, we had Tesla request some charging stations.
Right, Tesla was the impetus behind the 2017 zoning ordinance amendment, which allowed some signage.
And they do not charge for the charging. It comes with the cost of the new car. But.
Is that limited just to Tesla owners, though?
Yes, yeah.
My understanding is those Tesla charges are proprietary and only work with Teslas, yes.
That's what I thought, yeah.
You have to be able to afford a Tesla to start with. I guess I got a question on some of these existing parking garages. Everybody knows how tight they are, anyway. Where are they gonna, how are you gonna fit charging stations in a parking garage? I mean, there's barely, you're parked up against the wall as it is.
Well, the parking stations could be, you know, could be on the side, you know, they're, I mean, the ones that I showed you were freestanding charging stations in parking lots, but, you know, they, they could be between two parking stations, you know, like this, this one with the green on it, it, you know, you could have, you could have one of those between parking, parking spaces that would, would serve the.
But then you give up a parking spot for one of these, and, I don't know, I guess I'd.
Well, you know, to, you have to remember that the Planning Department is responding to the ordinance that the County Council adopted, which it says unincorporated section of St. Louis County, and it says parking lots. It doesn't, it doesn't specify parking garages. It doesn't say how this is going to work. It just, you know, requires them. I know that, you know, and there is, there is a requirement in here that it be located in a convenient area. Let me see, let me find this.
Yes, shall be placed in a location as desirable and convenient as possible.
And also, Gary, just to add, on campus at Wash U, I've seen where some, where they added them, they've taken some existing parking spaces and added some of these charging stations. So, it's like a row of maybe four or five at the moment, but like, like the statute says, 10% of the parking in the parking lot will be dedicated to these locations. So, they may add some, or they may use some of the existing parking spaces.
That's gonna make it rough if you've got a small parking lot and you're giving up 10% of it.
Would that include churches also?
Excuse me?
Churches?
The only exceptions in the ordinance are for gasoline stations, buildings without a designated parking lot, and parking spaces located in the public rideaway.
So, I guess it would include churches, they have to.
It would include churches. Now, it's, Mr. Cunningham said it's 10%. 10% of the parking spaces need to be wired and able to be, have a charging station provided, but only 2% of the parking spaces need to have, need to be, have actual charging stations.
Hey, how does that gonna conflict with handicap? What percentage have to be handicap parking?
Handicapped is, handicapped is based on the building code, and it's, it's fair, it's, if it's less than, if it's 25 parking spaces or less, I think it's two, I mean, it's fairly, it's a fairly small percentage as well.
What I will say is that these stations do not preclude anyone from parking in these parking stalls. So, there is not an anticipation that there's going to be a significant loss of parking across parking lots. These do not stop you from parking, you know, in these stalls. So, these stalls will still be usable. I think the intent and the point is that as time moves on and as time goes forward, as we see more and more electric vehicles, they're just naturally going to be using, the electric vehicles will naturally sort of gravitate to these spaces.
Okay, so that's in the ordinance that you can use that space even though you're not using electric?
It's silent, but the silence is, there's, because there's no prohibition against it, there's no, you know, and the county's not going to go out and sort of, there's no enforcement of, you know, of a regulation that doesn't, doesn't actively prohibit, you know, a motorist from parking in one of these spaces.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none. Mel, you wanna see if anyone wants to speak?
Sure, so if anyone has comments or questions about this petition, please click the raise hand button. That's either next to your name on the participant list, or possibly in the bottom right-hand corner. Sondi, Sondi, you want to speak on the Rustic Roots petition, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But I don't see anyone else. I don't see anyone at this time.
Okay, and that will then conclude this hearing, and we'll go on to PC 32-21, St. Louis County Planning Commission, amend Section 1003.101 in the zoning ordinance.
This is Debbie Solberg again, planner with the St. Louis County Department of Planning, 41 South Central, 63105. PC 3221 is a proposal to amend Section 1003.101 Flood Plane District Regulations of the St. Louis County Zoning Ordinance pertaining to regulations that require the seal of professional engineer on flood plane development permit applications. The Commission will recall that property zone flood plane, FP flood plane, is also zoned under another applicable district governed by the St. Louis County zoning ordinance. The flood plane, the FP flood plane district constitutes an overlay district, and other applicable zoning district, and the other applicable zoning district constitutes the underlying zoning. The flood plane regulations control, in the case of any conflict between the regulations pertaining to area in the flood plane and the regulations otherwise applicable to any property by virtue of its underlying zoning. This proposed change is to allow some discretion by the Department of Transportation and Public Works to waive the professional engineer's seal requirement in the case of extremely minor projects. The projects in question will generally be small changes to existing residential lots. The proposed wording in Section 1003.101 of the zoning ordinance in a variety of places would be to add the words "as directed by the Department of Transportation and Public Works." It would not be the intent to waive this requirement under most circumstances. This is to allow some relief for when a resident wants to do a small, a small project on their property that, because it's in the flood plane, would normally require a PE stamp, but because it is so minor and can be determined that it will not impact the flood plane or the flood portion of the property, that that requirement for a professional engineer's seal and signature on a plan could be waived.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions for me?
Yeah, go ahead. Anyone?
Yeah, Wayne, it's Keith.
Yeah, Keith.
Debbie, is this primarily on properties that have been established residential properties probably for 50, 60 years?
Well, it, you know, I, we have.
On an acre or so in certain places.
Yeah, like if you, like if you were gonna change your driveway, or if you were gonna put in a retaining wall, or something, something minor, you know, you would still, you know, if you had undeveloped property that was in the flood plain, you'd still have to, have, probably have to have the professional engineer's seal. It would be for exist, more existing projects. We do, I believe, one of the speakers this evening will be the Civil Plan Review Section Head, Mr. Jim Knoll, and I believe that he's gonna better answer that question.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, Mel, you wanna see if anyone wants to speak?
Yeah, Jim, Jim, why don't you go ahead and, and explain your request here? Jim, can you hear us? I'm not hearing you, and I've unmuted him.
Hello?
Yes.
You can hear?
Yes.
Okay, so, this amendment.
Identify yourself for the record, Jim.
Okay, I'm James Knoll. I'm the St. Louis County Flood Plane Administrator. I work in the Transportation Department, 41 South Central, in Clayton. This ordinance change request is simply to allow, like a homeowner, if they want to replace a slab in their driveway, to do that, they would still submit plans to us, we would still review it, they would still have to get a flood plane development permit, but we would just allow them to proceed without the expense of getting a professional engineer to prepare all the documents and sign and seal everything, which is the current requirement. And we think it makes sense for these really minor projects that don't have any impact on the flood plain in reality, to just avoid that unnecessary expense.
Is this on, would this be the department's call, whether it's needed or not?
Yes, we would, we would look at every application, and we would determine, is this something that's gonna impact any flow in the flood plain? Is it gonna have any impact at all in the flood plain? If it is, then we will require the engineer involvement.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Seeing none, we thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't see any raised hands on this petition.
Okay, and seeing none, we'll then proceed on to PC 33-21, Scott Shelton, request for NU to R3.
Good evening, this is PC 33-21, Scott Shelton. It's a request for a change in zoning from NU to R3 for a 3.37 acre tract of vacant land on the east side of Hagaman Road, approximately 40 feet, 40 feet south of Studer Lane. You can see from the county context map that the site is in South County, and there it is outlined in red. Here's the land use map. Directly across from the site is Hagaman Elementary School. Most of the development surrounding the site is single-family residences with some vacant parcels to the south and southwest, and Susan Park to the northeast. Here's the second aerial, and you can see the school and surrounding single-family residences. Here we are looking east onto the site at the public hearing sign. This is looking north up Hagaman Road. This is looking northwest, this is Hagaman Elementary School. Looking west directly across Hagaman Road. Looking south down Hagaman, where you can see some of the existing single-family homes next door. This is also looking south on the site. Here, we are looking east, we're at the northern property line where the property abuts the neighboring single-family subdivision. Still looking east, this is in the middle of the site. Here we are looking at the rear property line. This is at the rear of the site, looking west towards Hagaman Road. And lastly, this is looking at the site from across Hagaman.
Okay, Clay, I'm going to make you the presenter, and then you'll need to click share, and then whatever application you have the PowerPoint in.
Okay. You can hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you all right.
Okay. All I can see is my PowerPoint, so can you see it?
You probably need to go back to WebEx and hit share first along the bottom bar, by the new button. Oh, here it comes, here it comes.
All right. So, this is a fairly simple request, I think. 6404 Hagaman Road, it's 3.37 acre tract, it has, it's currently vacant. We're requesting R3, which is consistent with what's to the north, to the south and west, to the south and east is currently non-urban, to the southwest is R3 also. So, you know, we wanted to ask for a consistent zoning with what was, with what's proposed. What we would, what we, what we would be proposing on that is a single fam, single-family subdivision. This is the tract with the survey that you can see right here outlined in red, with the zoning's noted. And, you know, what we would be proposing is no, no new streets, just five lots that would access off of Hagaman. There is currently under construction, there's a house on what would be the south, the southern end, it complies with the non-urban, with the non-urban setbacks, but, so we, we got, we got that started before we applied, but we did make sure that it would fit with the, with the ultimate proposal here. All of these lots would be almost half an acre, actually, all of them would exceed a half an acre, and I know that you're not here to review this, but this is what the proposal would be or will be, assuming that the zoning is approved. We've been into MSD with the sanitary sewer extension, and that's, that's getting underway soon because we needed to serve that house that's going in there. You know, without spending a lot of your time, that's, that's the, that's the request, currently non-urban, and we're looking to go with R3, which is consistent with what's adjacent. Okay, Commissioners, questions? Okay, Commissioners, questions? Are these lots going to be individually sold, or is it one builder?
The, so the, I believe, I believe that the petitioner bought the entire piece. They're building lot one for himself, I believe, and then the other lots would be built out by the same builder and then sold as their it's it's kind of, it's kind of a joint venture between the, between the petitioner who was building his house on lot one and then the the developer that's going to build the rest of the houses out for him, which is keenly construction.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, Wayne, Keith.
Yeah.
Do we have any renderings of what the houses look like?
We we do not. I mean, the the, we're, we're, we have a really they would keenly builds builds a lot of houses down in South County, and they would be consistent with what they build, but I don't have, I don't have any renderings or anything of the houses. I would expect to be very nice houses.
Yeah. What size homes would it be in square footage?
Be honest with you, I I don't know. I can't imagine them being anything less than about twenty-five hundred, but these lots would allow a nice big house. All right, but I I I really couldn't tell you. I don't know that answer.
Sir, is there any water retention or detention?
There will have to be, and we would, what we are planning to do is to do with the size of these lots, each each lot would have an individual rain garden on it rather than putting a central basin in.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none. Bill, you got something?
No.
Okay, Mel, you want to see if anyone wants to speak?
Sure. So if anyone has comments or questions regarding this petition, please click the raise hand button next to your name on the participant list or send a message in the chat. But at this time, I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay, seeing none, this will conclude this hearing. And we'll go on to three D, which is P C thirty-four dash twenty-one, Stephen P. Link and Kathy M. Jaeger. Request for a C U P in an M one district.
Let me pull the PowerPoint back up.
Good evening. We have P C thirty-four dash twenty-one, Stephen P. Link and Kathy M. Jaeger requesting a C U P in the M one industrial district on a four point three four acre site located at the southeast corner of Bell Fountain Road and Hilltop Lane. As you can see from the county context map, the site is located in North St. Louis County. You can also see it outlined in red on the small aerial photograph. Looking at the land use map, you can see that the site is located near some single-family residential uses, some vacant land, and some other industrial uses. This is just a larger aerial photograph showing you more detail. You can see that the site is just right up along Bell Fountain Road outlined in red. So this is across this, across Bell Fountain Road, looking east into the site. This is also across Bell Fountain Road, looking northeast into the site, where you can see the existing single-family residents on the site. And this is just showing that the single-family residence is up in the, looking in the northeast corner. So this is kind of in the middle of the site, looking down towards the south into the southern portion. This is standing on that eastern property line, looking into the adjacent properties. Here we are, kind of in the middle of the northern part of the site, looking south, kind of next to the existing industrial structure on the site. This is again at the north property line, looking into the adjacent, or sorry, the west property, east property line, looking into adjacent properties. This is standing on the western property line, looking at the adjacent single-family residences. This is again, looking to the west, a little farther down Bell Fountain Road with more single-family residents. So this is looking towards the south on Bell Fountain Road. And here we are, looking north on Bell Fountain Road. So here we are looking headed east on Hilltop Lane. This would be the nearest property across Hilltop Lane, looking to the northeast. This is the adjacent single-family residence, you know, looking at it down into the south. And then this is looking farther up, kind of the bend, east along Hilltop Lane. And next we have the petitioner's presentation.
Okay, thank you. Is petitioner here?
I'm here on the P C thirty-five twenty-one.
This would be Kathy Jaeger. Kathy, you're unmuted now. I'm bringing up the outboundry.
We're thirty-four twenty-one.
Kathy?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, you can go ahead with your your request.
Okay.
Kathy? Where she went? Kathy, we cannot hear you if you're speaking.
We can give her a minute. If she doesn't reappear, we can hold the, we can hold the petition until she regains.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. We, are you getting feedback from me?
Yeah, there's an echo.
Okay, turn that down. Okay, we had a little problem with Steve's computer, so I'm actually on my phone. Okay, there we go. All right, anyway, I'm going to give you a little bit of background. Steve has been an auto mechanic for over forty years at various businesses in our area. He bought this house on four point three six acres with two, two existing outbuildings in order to continue his career and passion through retirement. He's lived in Spanish Lake his whole life and is dedicated to the community and the residents. The largest building on the property has two garage doors and two large bays. Steve has a large following from his days at the shops. His new business would have no signage nor advertising. Business would be through word of mouth. He has no employees. A friend may occasionally stop by if he needs an extra pair of hands. The building was previously used as a metal fabrication business. An auto repair shop would be no more disruptive. As soon as Steve completes a repair, the customer picks up his car. It would not be a storage lot. There would be no late noise or rubbing of engines. He bought the house in two thousand nineteen, and since then, we have been working on the cup, but our process was slowed by COVID. We needed a property survey, and then it had to be amended. We had to research and provide documentation that the house was used as a residence, so we could get the yeah, I forget what you call that. And anyway, again, this would be a small owner-owned business, not Dobbs or Firestone. Steve has plans to landscape and approve the grounds around the building, and we believe the shop would be an asset to Spanish Lake. Just one, the only other thing I have is currently there are two dusk to dawn lights and two other lights outside. Some trees and bushes at the woodline. Grass will be planted this spring. Hours of operation would be nine to six thirty Monday through Saturday. Does anyone have any questions?
Commissioners, anyone?
Yeah, Wayne, Keith here.
Yeah, Keith.
Question in particular, how how many vehicles themselves, will they be stored inside existing structures when they're left overnight?
I have room for two.
He has room in two, he has two bays where they would be overnight.
Do you plan on having other vehicles sitting out in the parking lot, and how many?
I would say occasionally, yeah. I try to keep it at a minimum.
You know, he might be waiting on parts for something.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, anyone else?
Yes, this is Cunningham. Do you have any renderings of the type of building you want to put there?
The building is already here. It was in the first presentation. The the building is already here. It's a metal garage with two garage doors and two bays. It was at the beginning of the presentation.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, the building, building has been here since nineteen, early nineteen eighties is when the building was built.
Is there any way we could go back to that first, one of the first pictures? Now, from the beginning, remember?
Yes, let me bring that back up.
Great, thank you.
Of the main structure?
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah, that's one view of the side of it.
The small house is my, it's on the same property.
I think that's the main photo that shows the
No, that's the neighbors.
No, he's talking
I mean, this one.
The only one. Yeah, and so on the left side of that building is where the two garage doors and the bays are.
So what we're looking at, that's the only thing, the only parking area you have, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Yes, right in front of the directly at, that's parking area. Plus, the entire area on the left side of the building is all asphalt with enough room to pull cars in and out of, and as you can see, there are two vehicles on the left. There's actually room for about four altogether there. And then on the backside of the building, near that old white garage back there, there was also some additional parking back there.
But mostly, I mean, he isn't planning on having that many cars. I mean, he's just a one-man shop, so you know, it's not like he's going to take on more than he can handle because people need their cars back pretty quickly.
So you wouldn't have eighteen-wheelers or tractors or?
No.
Is there anything like that there?
Only in a case if I had a, had a delivery of a part that required truck freight. I, nothing bigger than an F three fifty Ford pickup truck. I, I don't work on anything bigger than that. I'm just, I'm too old to work on that big stuff.
Okay, you said no signage of of any kind at all, strictly word of mouth?
Yeah.
Yes.
I can't, I'm just one guy, and I really can't keep up with what I have, and I have absolutely no reason to advertise.
I mean, he'll tell people, like, if they call and they have a problem, he'll say, you know, can, can you bring it in Saturday, or I can't, can you bring it in next week? You know, I can't get to you right now. Because like he said, he is, is only one person other than if he has a job that he needs some extra hands, you know, he'll get a buddy to come over, but that's it.
Fencing around there?
Pardon me?
Any fencing, fencing?
There's his backyard of his residence is fenced, but not the part that's where we went the C U P.
Okay, the parking lot would not be fenced, is what you're saying?
No.
And the hours of operation would be what now?
Nine to six thirty, give people time, you know, after work to come and get their car.
Okay, anyone else, Commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Mel, you want to see if anyone wants to speak?
Yes, we do have a call-in speaker, Mr. Zilch. You are unmuted to give your comments.
Okay, could you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, as far as, I I would like to say that I oppose this one hundred percent. It's been nothing but traffic and more traffic and parts deliveries, and as far as parking vehicles, there's been fifteen, over fifteen vehicles parked there all the time until the last few days. The cars are sitting around everywhere. He's moved a concrete company in on the property. They've got dump trucks sitting there and all kinds of other things. And recently, in the last few days, they put in another driveway to the property. And I don't believe that he's, he cares about the neighbors or or anything else that he's going to be doing because he just cares about this business, and this is residential, and there is no commercial property around there, and there hasn't been any commercial property, and we don't want any commercial property. And I'd just like to go on record that I'm against it one hundred percent.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Okay, next will be M. Messiah, if you would make your comments and state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Marco Messiah.
Thank you. Please refuse.
Thank you. We too are concerned with a commercial property coming into a residential area mainly because of the increase in traffic that this new commercial entity will bring, and also the possibility of bringing crime to our neighborhood. So my family and I are opposed to this one hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
Melissa, I saw Melissa Maddox, you, you spoke in the chat. Would you like to make a comment? Ms. Maddox?
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you're unmuted.
Yeah, no, I I've lived here for over twenty years, and we have enough problems with the traffic coming from the boys' home. People speeding past, the traffic has severely increased over these last year, year and a half. And I, I'm opposed to a, a, a business in this residential area.
Okay, if anyone else would like to speak, please click the raise hand button next to your name or send a message in the chat. But at this time, I don't see anyone. Oh, I'm sorry. Next will be Jeffrey Smith. Jeffrey, you are unmuted.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this person having a business here. I live north of this property on Bell Fountain Road and pass it every single day. And actually, he's cleaned the property up from what it was before. It was an overgrown mess. And it was a business. And, uh, it was a business. Um, before. And. It's no change in my mind. As far as additional traffic and stuff like that is concerned. When they had the steel fab shop there, they had people coming in and out. The, the past owner had it a, a, uh. Like it's kind of a collector car. Facility and had all kinds of derelict vehicles out in the parking lot. And, um. It's no different than what it's been in the past twenty or thirty years. I've lived here since nineteen eighty-two. That, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mel, anyone else?
Yes, we will have Fred Summerich. Fred, you are unmuted.
Alright, I'm unmuted and I live, uh, directly across the street from Mr. Link. And I, uh, echo what Mr. Smith has also said that, uh, you know, there is, uh, no outrage. When the, uh, property was littered and cluttered with cars before. And now Mr. Link is over there and he's, uh, cleaned the property up. And, um, so really, uh, that's really all we have to say. And as far as the traffic is concerned, there are farm equipment, there are landscape companies, several of them over here on this side of the property. Which is, the property is, you know, I heard residential. Well, this is M one over here. This is commercial. I get it, but it is what it is and we have, uh, commer, are, are the, we have the, uh, um. Landscape companies pulling their trailers over the bridge twenty-four seven, man. Sorry, guys, but, uh, I'm all in for Steve Link. Thank you and have a great one.
Next will be George, uh, oh. That, that may be all the speakers.
Okay. Uh, petitioner, you have any comments as to what we just heard?
Uh, just a couple of things from me and then Steve probably will, but when they're talking about traffic on increase. I really don't see that. I mean. For one thing, there's residences all up and down Bell Fountain Road and both sides of the road on Hilltop. Farther up Bell Fountain Road and then the, uh, Fort Bell Fountain, which isn't just the boys home. I mean, it's open to the public. People go up there and they hike and they have group tours and, um, they ride their bikes. So, and it's also an entrance to Fountainhead off of Bell Fountain Road two. And Fountainhead is a huge development that's on the Missouri River. So there's more traffic than, than Steve is generating. Uh, Steve, is there anything else you want to say?
Yes. Um, let me start off from the beginning here. Let me turn my ball. I am down. I want to start off from the beginning. First of all, I moved in here. September twenty-ninth of two thousand and nineteen. It took a lot of time to move everything that I got down here. And after a couple of months, I was able to get the shop organized enough to where I could continue to start working again. I'm not a man of many dollars. I can't sit around without doing work or I'll go bankrupt. So during all this time, I've had to do some work out of the shop. To generate enough revenue to pay my bills. Having said that. In the two years prior to the sign being put up in front of my building. Saying that there was going to be a hearing. I heard absolutely no complaints at all. About anything that I was doing on my property. No letters, no phone calls or letters from the county. No residents came down, nearby residents came down to talk to me. There was nothing there. This all started when we put the sign up or the young lady came out and put the sign up in front of the building. As far as the concrete trucks on the property, I have a very good friend of mine who's in the concrete business. The place where he was storing his vehicles. Was closing. They wanted everybody off of there and he needed someplace to put his contract trucks, con- concrete trucks. For about a year. About five months of that has already went by. They've been there for five months. In the morning, two of those trucks roll out and they have to go over the bridge. That's the only way in and out of here. And at the end of the day, two of them roll in. There was never a complaint about those pickup trucks or, or the, uh, the trucks there. The gravel that was spread around the backside of the building didn't happen just recently. It's been there for months. That was one of the first things Jason did for me. When I allowed him to keep his trucks here. For nearly a year. He's got about another six or seven months and then his new place where he's going to have all of his equipment stored, that will be ready. And then all of his stuff will leave my property. As far as the landscaping of the area, it was horrific when I moved in. You couldn't even hardly see the back garage from the street view. You could see the peak of the roof. That was it. That back white garage that's in the photo. And as far as the property, the two plus acres to the right of the building as you're looking at it. That was, well, if you were a deer or a raccoon, it would have probably been a beautiful area. But when I talked to some of the neighbors, they said that before the older gentleman moved in. It was all beautiful, nice, well manicured grass. It was beautiful. And that's the way I, I'm going to have it again. So luckily, some friends of mine with some bobcats came and basically stripped all the land. We're grading it now. We're getting ready to seed, so we got some grass there this summer. I want to have a word about traffic. There was never a complaint about the amount of traffic. For two years, as I was working out of that shop. Making sure that I didn't go bankrupt. No, nothing was said about traffic at all until that sign went up in front of my building. I can tell you that ninety-nine percent of the cars that come up and down Bell Fountain Road back to our area. They do not stop at my house or my property. And there's a bunch of them all day long. Like Kathy was saying, there's a rich gated neighborhood at the end of Bell Fountain Road. People fly down in their fancy Mercedes Benz cars doing fifty, sixty miles an hour. They don't stop at my house. If I had to say how many people stopped by actually in a car at my business and home a day. It would be five or less. I'm not contributing to any increase in traffic at all whatsoever. Uh, crime. Doesn't seem to be a lot of crime back here. It seems like that folks over the bridge. We have a way of looking out for each other. And I've gotten along with almost everybody back here that I've met. There are some people that I haven't met. And I really think that we need to meet. If you have issues that you'd like to discuss with me. My door is always open. As a friend, come down, we'll talk about issues and we'll work towards whatever it is. Uh, that's of concern. As far as the increase in traffic. You will see no more going on at that shop than you do right now. And that you have for the past two years that nobody said anything about.
And also I, I'll add that there won't be an increase. In crime because Steve lives right adjacent to the building and he's home twenty-four seven. So there's no, and there's, it's well lit, so there's gonna be no, no increase in crime.
Then if anybody has any questions that they would like to ask me about my history. Um, I would be more than happy to answer any of those questions either here. Or you can come down and see me in person and I can show you my shop and my house. My dogs, I can tell you what I want to do with the property in the next year, year and a half. Just to throw this out here, since I'm getting a little older. Once the, uh, once Jason's trucks leaves, which is gonna be in five or six months. He will finish grading the property and we're going to seed it all with grass. And you guys may laugh at me here, but I am going to, I have enough room down there, almost three acres. I'm gonna put two. Par three hole golf courses down there. So that occasionally on the weekend, when I have a few friends over and we're barbecuing, we can hit some golf balls on the land. Naturally, and all the neighbors would be welcome to join in if they want. I've told a bunch of them about it already and they're all for it. But that's what I want to do. I, I just want to relax and enjoy. The remaining time that I have and I, I, I love working on cars. It's born into me.
And again, uh, like we said, this is not a Firestone and Dobbs. Steve's a one man operation, so.
Can you, can you address the, uh, first speaker brought up? That you had fifteen vehicles stored at one time and you said you had minimum. Storage. Uh, what do you propose number wise?
Well, I mean, it, it, it's possible that there could have been. Fourteen or fifteen cars there at some point. Uh, I've had a lot of friends over that have helped me do a lot of work. They all got to get there some way or another. But as you see it right now. If you were looking at the building, there are three cars in front of the building. One of them is a Mini Cooper that I'm still waiting on one part. Seven weeks later, you can't see it because the old gray Chevy, old brown Chevy trucks in front of that. And there's a Volkswagen in front of that that doesn't run. I need to get in, waiting for the customer to come up with the money to put a transmission in it.
I'm not talking about people coming and going. It's more how many cars left overnight waiting for repair. Would be left on the outside of the building.
I have a quota that I like to keep. I, I don't like having more than three or four cars here. Other than the ones I'm working on. A lot of customers will call me and they say, Steve. We just want to get the car to you. You can keep it for as long as you want. And I always got to tell them the same thing. I'm like, it's gonna be a month before I can get to your car. It'd be better off if it was sitting in your driveway than mine because I don't want all these cars around. This is one of the things I, I don't, I don't want to advertise. I don't want to have a whole bunch of commotion going on here. I want it to be nice and peaceful and quiet, like it has been for the first two years. Until that sign got put up. I don't know what the sign did, but it sure changed everything. I got neighbors that I never knew complaining about me now. Uh, and I never heard a, a hide nor peep out here out of anybody until that sign went up in front of my building.
Okay.
Mr. Hilsinger, we did have one, uh, another comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, George Isold. George, you are unmuted. Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
That's okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Yes, my name is George Isold and I live just south of the property in question. Across the street. Um, what Steve has done to that property, what it used to look like is night and day. I mean, he's only improved it in my eyes. Uh, as far as traffic goes, uh, I mean, I agree with Fred. I've seen combines, heavy farm equipment, semis hauling dump trucks. The end of Hilltop Lane where the farmers are farming. I've seen more lawn care people. But I am totally in agreement. And I am not opposed to this at all. I feel safe up there because truly I see more police officers bringing their dogs in for the canine training. Facility at the end of Bell Fountain Road. Um, there's been some cars there, but the lot's not full. And as far as the concrete company goes, I can vouch because I've actually been helping that guy get his new lot prepared. And get his stuff out of there. So I'm all, I'm all for Mr. Link's business. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your comments. No one else, Mel?
No, that, that is all the public comment.
Okay, um, don't think we need rebuttal on a positive, so, uh, with that, we'll conclude this hearing. And we thank everyone. And we'll go to PC thirty-five dash twenty-one, Eric Scott and Jeanette Lewis. Uh, request for an R three to R one.
Uh, good evening commissioners, this is PC thirty-five dash twenty-one Eric Scott and Janet Lewis. Uh, requesting a change in zoning from R three to R one for three point two seven acre tract. Located on the west side of Eckert Lane approximately five hundred and forty feet north of Priggy Road. As you can see from the county contacts map, this is, uh, located in, in North County. It's in, uh, the Spanish Lake area. Uh, and then the aerial shows the parcel outlined in red. Uh, from the land use map, you can see that immediately abutting the subject site to the north is Laramore Park. Um, the primary land use around the parcel is single family residential. Um, you can see to the south Hazelwood Southeast Middle School, um, and there is, um, some more vacant and agricultural land to the east. And then this, uh, aerial just shows the, the parcel again and, uh, sort of closer context, you can see the Laramore Port. Laramore Park to the north of the surrounding single family and then Hazelwood Southeast Middle to the south. Uh, this view is looking west across Eckert. Uh, you can see the public hearing notice sign. And then this view would be looking north along, um, Eckert along the, the eastern boundary. And then this view is looking west along the northern property line, uh, that field area is Laramore Park. And then this view would be essentially turning around, looking east across Eckert Lane. And then this view is a little bit further south down Eckert, looking across Eckert towards Sager Lane. And then this view is looking south along Eckert Lane. You can see in the distance there that building is Hazelwood Southeast Middle School. Uh, this view would be looking northeast into the subject site. Uh, on the other side of that fence would be Eckert. Uh, and then this view is looking, uh, north, uh, into the subject site. On the other side of that tree line is Laramore Park. Uh, and then this view is looking northwest into the subject site. And then this view would be looking west along the southern property line into the adjoining property. And then this view is, uh, looking south across the, the southern property line towards the adjoining property. And now the petitioner has a presentation.
Okay, petitioner?
Okay, Janet, I'm making you the presenter. And then you'll need to click share on the bottom bar of WebX and then click whatever you have your presentation in. Oh, we couldn't hear you at first, Janet, what?
Um, when I go to allow the, uh, Cisco WebX events to share my screen. It says I have to quit and log back on. Can you not share the PowerPoint I sent earlier?
Yes, I can do that. Let me open that up. Alright, it's coming up.
Thank you.
I apologize. It's taking a minute to open up.
It's okay.
Okay, here we go.
Okay, so to kind of understand and give you some history to, um, what this land um, has come from, this is kind of the story of where it begins. We had this problem property on Eckert Lane that what had quickly become a nuisance property. Um, it was set on fire two times. People were illegally dumping all over it. County was called out here probably weekly, um, just to deal with the illegal dumping, which they could never stop because every time the person would say, oh, the owner gave them permission. So until we bought this property out of probate and followed all the instructions given to us by county, which were to demolish it, push everything into the ground, clear the whole space out. Um, this is what all of the residents on Eckert Lane were having to deal with. Next slide. So Rustic Root Sanctuary is, uh, basically a sustainable farm. It's also a five oh one C three. And our vision is to create food access in a promised zone. We have one grocery store Schnucks, um, in, in, in Spanish Lake and there are a lot of convenience places, liquor stores, but there's no real, uh, food up here aside from Schnucks. So we asked the community what they wanted to do and they said they wanted to put in a community garden. So our tagline is nourishing roots, encouraging shoots and sharing the fruits of our labor. And that's basically what it's all about. We're creating a sustainable retreat in Spanish Lake. And then we, um, are influencing, mentoring and supporting growers in communities all over North County, leading to greater food access. Our mission is to create access to fresh, organic, locally grown food in promised zones, teach sustainability through agriculture, education and career development, and help individuals and communities through holistic health. We'd like to put the power, uh, in the hands of local farmers and their communities. There, we're showing people that there's something to be done about not having food access. Next slide. Our core values are to create leader, leadership retreats, um, so that we can train, grow and empower community leaders. We collaborate with several different individuals and organizations that are aligned with our mission. We're all about inclusion and acceptance. We will be as diverse as the foods we grow, understanding we're all interconnected. Um, passion and courage to do the work that's in our hearts and to create superior food products and outcomes with everything we do. Next slide. So here are some of the inner workings of, uh, what we've been up to. We had our first annual spring celebration. We brought community together. Everyone had a great time. Representative Marlene Terry spoke about local food initiatives. Alderwoman Ward one, um, Dinah Tatman spoke about bringing community together and working together. Councilwoman Shalonda Webb was scheduled, but she had to fly to Tennessee, I believe, last minute. So we're creating a space for elected officials to connect with their constituents. Next slide. We have collaborated with UCP Heartland. Uh, we're teaching youth, um, agricultural arts. This year we have five youth with some level of disability get summer work experience on the farm. They love the experience and they stay connected with us. The CEO did a site visit and he committed to an ongoing collaboration with us. Next slide. We did our first beekeeping mentorship this year. Um, mentees learned important life lessons about collaboration and cooperation from the hive. We're helping save pollinators. We distributed forty gallons of honey into this community. Next slide. And here are just kind of some pictures of what you would see inside, uh, the gates. We have a small goat herd. Children get to experience all these farm animals. Many of them have never seen before. Uh, fresh lettuce. You can see Doralita's picking her own bud of lettuce there. Next slide. And these are just more of our community garden members, uh, in this lower picture on the right-hand corner, you see a young lady milking a goat for the very first time. Next slide. We're also creating a lot of positive media attention for Spanish Lake. We have been interviewed by St. Louis Public Radio. We were on STL TV City Corner. Um, we've been on the Earthworms Podcast and Speak Up St. Louis Podcast. Next slide. Our twenty twenty-one events included an annual spring celebration, two restorative nature immersion women's retreats, and then the Spanish Lake Farmers Market was every Wednesday from five thirty to sunset. We also had an art festival, October the sixteenth, that was really well attended and well received. And we're collaborating with Laramore Elementary on a STEAM, uh, program planning where they'll bring the kids out to the farm. Next slide. So now we need your help. We have a vision that includes improvements to the land. We're building community, teaching agriculture, sustainability and the importance of nutrition. We're creating an abundance of healthy food in a food desert. This year we grew and distributed over six thousand pounds of food. This is just the beginning because we're gaining traction and growing awareness all the time. We've been awarded grants from Deaconess, Missouri Foundation for Health, Francesca and Sisters of Mary, Arts and Healing Council, Missouri Department of Agriculture, Racial Healing and Justice Fund from Ford through Ferguson and Commerce Bank Shares Foundation. These funders all believe in and support our work. Next slide. So these are just some testimonials, um, from people after they visited the farm. Uh, I tried to get as many people here as I could, but of course people have busy schedules and so I figured some testimonials from the public would be good. Um, this lady Donna Ray says, "The history of the land and the story of vision for the future for the farm is enchanting and arouses delightful images of what is possible in our community." We will be back. Next slide. And then this lady said, "Besides running, there isn't anything that brings me more joy than being on a farm. Got off work at six thirty AM and my mind was on the farm. My garden bed produced some more zucchini. There is an abundance of all types of greens. Everything is blooming. The aroma of lemongrass is intoxicating. Got some peppers and some greens." Next slide. Um, for after one of our women's events, uh, one of the quotes was, "This event changed my life." Next slide. And here are some of the activities. We have one of our garden members working hard, um, filling up some garden containers. Uh, we have different people all the time, whether they're coming in through the farmer's market or a yoga class or um, any different thing we hold here. They usually have an amazing time and really love this space. And then they go online and talk about it. So that's building a little bit of awareness too about the good things that are happening in Spanish Lake. Next slide. And these are just more testimonials. It's late, so next slide. Okay, so I, I might've gone heavy on the test, on the, on the testimonials. And, and then these are the kids, uh, from UCP Heartland. They all wrote us letters about how much they learned, how much they loved, uh, catching chickens and goats, et cetera. And we can just fly through those Mel. Yeah, so this is our twenty twenty-two events and programs that we're hoping to bring. The Spanish Lake Farmers Market again, because it was a huge success. We have a homebound senior delivery program where we deliver, you know, ten pound, ten to twenty pounds of fresh produce to people that can't get out of their homes in the neighborhood. We'll have the annual spring celebration. We have seed summer work experience for youth. We'll have the annual arts festival, uh, two restorative nature immersion woman events and, uh, beekeeping mentorship year two, and then a culinary arts program, which includes planting herbal medicine in a medicine wheel. Next slide. And these, this is just a shout out to our funders that kind of make the, make the work happen. Next slide. And then we have, um, cases for community gardens. So I'll just read this one. "We find that the opening of a community garden has a statistically significant positive impact on resident, on residential properties within a thousand feet of the garden and that the impact increases over time. We find that gardens have the greatest impact in the most disadvantaged neighborhoods. Higher quality gardens have the greatest positive impact. Finally, we find that the opening of a garden associated with other changes in the neighborhood such as increasing rates of home, homeownership, and this may be serving as a catalyst for economic redevelopment of a community." Next slide. And then this one is, "Community gardens are one way that residents have mobilized to beautify urban neighborhoods, improve access to fresh produce and engage youth." Qualitative, qualitative case studies were conducted of two neighborhood-based community gardens with youth programs. Data collection included participant observation and in-depth interviews with adult gardeners and neighbors, youth and community police officers. Results suggest that the garden programs provided opportunities for constructive activities, contributions to the community, relationship and interpersonal skill development, informal social control, exploring cognitive and behavioral competence and improved nutrition. Community gardens promoted developmental assets for involved youth while improving their access and consume, consumption of healthy foods." Next slide. And so this is our lovely garden and this is what came out of that horrible nuisance property that you saw at the beginning of my slideshow. Next slide. And there's the orchard and a field where we grew a lot of watermelons that we sold out at the farmer's market every week. Next slide. Thanks so much for your time, attention and in advance for your support. Any questions or concerns?
Hey commissioners, any questions? Anyone? I don't see anyone.
I don't, I don't have a question.
Good job.
I'd like to make
I think she answered a lot of the questions.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I think what you're doing is very commendable, very commendable.
Who is that?
That's Harry Elliott.
Thank you so much. We're, we love doing it.
Yeah. It's a service that I think the community will well appreciate. Keep up the good work.
Jake, commissioners, any other comments? I think you answered everything, so we appreciate the, we appreciate the effort.
Well, I, I invite you all to come out and take a look for yourself. You kind of have to see it to believe it. The pictures don't do it justice. The, the property has like a whole relaxing, de-stressing vibration that a lot of people love.
Good, thank you. Um, Mel, you want to see if anybody has any comments?
Sure, we, we will start with Sandi McLean Clochner. Sandi, you are unmuted.
Thank you so much. My name is Sandi McLean Clochner and I'm speaking for the Native Women's Care Circle. We're an indigenous prayer group residing on the territorial lands of the O stage, Wasasi, Oto and others known as St. Louis. Uh, we'd like to voice our support for rezoning of the land for Rustic Root Sanctuary. Our members have very few place supporting our cultural and food sovereignty needs. We have support for, there for our ceremonies and traditions such as the Medicine Wheel Garden that is helping us to mourn our folks that we've lost this past year. Rustic Root Sanctuary has helped us feed the community in a food desert and is a place to forage and make traditional medicines. I have medicines that are going up to Standing Rock, uh, Native Reservation and most of those foods that made the medicines, the plants came from Rustic Root Sanctuary. It supports our physical, spiritual and mental well-being. And rustic roots cultivates abundance where there is scarcity. And it is truly a diverse jewel for the St. Louis County area. Please support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next will be Connie Rizby. Connie, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, we've been working with Janet and Eric for three years since the beginning of Grow Spanish Lake, which was the community garden. It's developed into Rustic Root Sanctuary, which is just totally awesome. You know, it's such a bright spot in this depressed area that we live in in North County. And the food delivery and the food that is grown there, the organic food has been such, uh, I would call it a treat, uh, and, and, and very needed for the community. I also would like to say that everything that they have done is well-designed, well-planned. And, uh, again, just a bright spot. So anything that, you know, that is developed on that property, our community can be proud of it. And all the people that we know here, our neighbors, our friends are just very supportive and behind Rustic Roots and the, and the garden.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Appreciate them.
Okay, next will be Sharon Mitchell. Sharon, you are unmuted.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say they are an asset to Spanish Lake. In St. Louis County, I ought to be proud that they're in Spanish Lake and that they want to do this out here for the people. They feed people free. They deliver food to them. I mean, they give the kids fun and a place to go. I mean, what else could you ask in a person given from their heart like that?
Okay, we, we thank you for your comments.
Okay, next will be, um, Basmeen. Uh, there is no last name. Please state your name for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yes, my name is Basmeen Red Deer. Uh, I'm also a member of Nate that have done events out in the area. And it has just been exhilarating participating in the enriching community that's been unfolding at Rustic which is the first offering of programs and activities I participated in. And as we the community that's growing to provide what Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe that is all the speakers. That's all the speakers shown at this time.
I don't think we need rebuttal since everyone spoke in favor. That concludes the hearing and, uh, we're done for the evening. We need a motion to adjourn.
Wayne, do you want me to go over the, uh, survey?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, so if you're still on the meeting, uh, when you leave, you should, uh, see a poll, a survey pop up that asks if you're in favor in opposition or have concerns regarding all of the petitions on tonight's public hearing. And those will be made part of the record.
And we have nothing else? We're good till what, December sixth?
We will have an executive meeting and a public hearing on December sixth.
Okay. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion for adjournment there.
We have second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. 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 Hi.
Eyes have it and we're adjourned till December sixth. Thank you, everyone.